It's a little fast.
You're fast, okay.
Change it after the meeting.
Alrighty, ready? I will call this meeting door, it's five thirty and that's a good friend of mine, Steve Spoon, if he will lead us in a prayer and the pledge. All right, Steve?
Father, we're so grateful that we've got people that are committed to improving our community, our city. Father Paige, you bless them. They give them wisdom and insight in how to do it, how to juggle all the difficulty that they come with, with the budget and the work and the projects that are going on. Thankful for what's taking place right now on Elliott Street. Seeing things come together. Father Paige, just continue to pour your blessings out in our city. You're doing great things here. I hope that we can have eyes to see all the great things that you have indeed in store for Breckridge. So pledge allegiance, where's the, there we go. Pledge allegiance to the flag.
United States of America. And to the Constitution which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Steve, thank you.
We don't do honor to Texas flag. No bucks. I wouldn't know that.
Enjoy your dinner.
Thank you. Alright. How you doing there, girl?
Hi, Howard.
I'm fine. Alright, open forum. This is an opportunity for the public to address the city commission in any matter of public business, except public hearings. Comments related to public hearings will be heard when the specific hearing begins. Nobody, I didn't think there was. Alright, staff report. Staff reports are for discussion only. No action may be taken on items listed out of this portion of the agenda other than to provide general direction to staff or to direct staff to place such items of a future agenda for action. No action will be taken. I'll turn it over to our city manager then.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Commissioners, I wanted to give you an update on the grant for the downtown revitalization. Little confusing, before I even got here, you guys applied for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three round of the downtown revitalization grant, which is a five hundred thousand dollar grant. And the project is just right here at this northwest corner of Rose and Elm. And it is sidewalk improvements, handicap accessibility improvements, and curb and gutter improvements on this section right here. We have a map, we'll see in a minute. But it also includes the north section of the courthouse there on Court on Elm, and then the west of the courthouse on Rose. But anyway, so we thought we were gonna get that grant, but then it turned out that we didn't. And then we went ahead and started that process to apply for the twenty-three, twenty-four round for the same project, everything was the same. And if you remember, you guys actually even awarded that.
Yeah.
But then they came back and said, we did get additional funding. And that happens a lot with grants. I mean, they award, maybe somebody fell out, they got more money. And so that's what happened. We, we were included. We got word last week that we did get that grant, the twenty-two, twenty-three grant. And so that was awarded, if you guys remember, to E H T, the engineer, E H T. So we're already starting on that. And the start date is August first there. You see the end date. We have until July thirty-first of twenty twenty-five to complete the project. The city match is seventy-five thousand dollars. And again, that project location is right here at Rose and Elm, basically that northwest corner and then the southeast corner. And just wanted to give you an update on that, so that's good news. The mayor did ask me about a status update on one eighty-three, so I wanted to provide that to you all. With Jordan Perry of Texas out, I talked to him today. They did have a little bit of a hiccup with they had to revise a section of the plans out in front of, I guess it used to be big books, that, that area there. They had to revise the plans, so there was probably a week or two holdup with that, but they feel like they're still on schedule. They're estimating that that traffic switch will happen within three to six weeks where they'll switch that traffic to the west side and start on the east side of the highway. There may be, you know, some lane closures as they go to do some little construction things along the way. But overall, they still expect to be done in the timeframe that they set. And barring any weather or anything like that, that's April of twenty twenty-four. It could maybe get complete before that, but they want to say April of twenty twenty-four just to make sure if they do get done earlier, it'll be, you know, good rather than saying that earlier that it can get done later. So wanted to give you that status. Also, as you guys notice, if you drive around, and I don't know if you've heard or seen Facebook, but we do have that project with Radon going on right now, and they've been doing prep work last week. And if you've seen that, I mean, they're scraping the streets and getting everything ready. We did ask them, there are several projects that are being done, and we put those on the website and on, on Facebook. We've asked them to start with the projects that are closest to school to try to get done. The overall project, barring material availability or weather, should be done by August, yeah, August, or August twentieth. But these projects for Elliott from one eighty-three to Harvey should be done tomorrow. He actually gave me a status update. They're almost halfway done today. They should be able to finish that up tomorrow. And then the two intersections, Miller and First and Miller and Second will be next, and they do envision that that will be done before next Tuesday. And then, of course, we've got Rose from Walker up to Seventh, and Seventh from Parks over to one eighty-three, and several other intersection improvements. So it's going, it looks great. You know, there have been a few hiccups that we did have to deal with. We had, you know, they started the the repairs there at Miller and First, and unfortunately, you know, with our AP structure, a water line broke. We were able to get a contractor with our street crews complimenting that work to get to replace the water line. Basically, this is the two inch that goes east-west on First. And we just, we didn't replace the whole thing all the way, but just where they're gonna be paving. And then there's one that runs north-south that apparently we have issues with, you know, getting a leak every year. And so we went ahead and replaced that as well, and those repairs are done. And so they'll be on it after Elliott to finish up Miller and First and Miller and Second, so. Exciting stuff.
Well, I know, you know, you and I talked today, and I'd already had a few people that had seen shorted them out there doing the work. And that's good. Like we've always said, it's good to talk about stuff, but people want to see something happening.
Yeah.
And they actually had. Tony, y'all be sure and make note of those dates and everything on one, all of them. Because I still get people asking me, when is that road gonna be through? When, when is it gonna be through? You know, we're in our, what, the third year of working on that thing, is that right, guys? Been about three, is that right, Stacy? About three years, Lance? Yeah, anyway, we, we know why. I mean, we understand. But if y'all would please put those dates and everything that the city managers are giving you, because I get I've gotta stop going to Walmart, because I can't get anything done. That's where I always traps me. But that, that's okay too. So anyway, it, it's all good. It's all good.
And that's it. We have upcoming events. As you can see there, we've got bulk pickup, August seventeenth. Of course, we're in the, you all will be taking action on this tonight, but the public hearing on the pack tray will be scheduled for August twenty-ninth.
Right, like, consent agenda. Any commission member may request an item on the consent agenda to be taken up for individual consideration. You guys will write, look at three, four, or five, and then we'll ask for a motion on that.
I move to approve consented items three through five as presented.
Motion and second, all in favor, none opposed. Thank you. Action item number six. Discuss and consider adoption of an ordinance authorizing the issue and sale of City of Breckridge, Texas combination tax and revenue certificates of obligation, series twenty twenty-three, levying an annual ad valorem tax and providing for the security for the payment of said certificates of obligation provided effective date and enacting other provisions relating to the subject. And we'll turn it back to our city manager.
Okay, well, you know, we've been talking about this for a while, even before I got here, so tonight, in June, you guys issued a notice of intent on a not to exceed amount of nine point one million. We were waiting for the final numbers from the appraisal district, which came in at two hundred and eighty-three, three sixty-three, three thirty-one for our taxable value. And then our financial advisors, you know, analyzing the markets right now. And so he is here to give you more detail on that, and this is Eric with Hilltop Advisors. And I'll let you say your last name, I'm sorry, Eric.
It's Mahal, but it looks like matcha. I had to hand out, I guess. Good evening, Mayor Commissioners, that mentioned Eric Mahal with Hilltop. We have a packet of information here this evening. On the agenda is the ordinance to approve certificates. Cynthia mentioned this process started in June, and so tonight's action would approve sale. The interest rates in the final term have been established. We actually yesterday went to the public market and the underwriting firm solicited investors, and we have the final interest rates here for the commissioners this evening. So real quickly on the cover page of the packet, I'll go through the, there, there are quite a few numbers and details that I'll go through the cover page real quick. Prior to going to the public market, you know, we received a bond rating for the city of Breckridge, and and that's part of the process for investors, they want to see. And you all came in at an A rating, which is a good mid-level rating for Texas City, so we're pleased to do that. So we have a copy of that report actually in the back of that packet. I won't read through the report, but you did include a copy of it. So that rating, with the A rating, and also we applied what we'd call insurance. There are a few insurance companies out there that will insure these certificates with a premium, but with that insurance, these certificates will be rated double eight, and the premium for that insurance, and I'll talk about that. But it's actually saving the city about ninety-five thousand dollars in interest by purchasing that insurance. Page one, like I said, we prepared a packet of information. I know the city was very helpful in carrying that information that was used to the investors, and so we just have a copy of that in here. Pretty thick packet with tables and charts on, on just some information within the city that investors wanted to see. Page three, and I believe we have a copy here on the screen, is probably the, the main page in the presentation, just kind of the nuts and bolts of the financing. You'll notice I'll work down from the top. I guess first, the funds will be deposited August twenty-ninth, that's what we have scheduled. Commissioners approval on the ordinance. The ordinance will go to the Texas Attorney General. Any debt in the state of Texas must be approved by the Attorney General, and so once that process occurs, we're scheduled to deliver the funds to the city on August twenty-ninth. On the top section, you'll notice it says sources. So based on the final pricing, and this is given, you know, the market, the bond market yesterday, the principal balance, we call it par amount, will be eight point three eight five million. That's the principal balance that the city will pay interest on. And then the certificate sold at a premium yesterday, so the investors paid, paid more, you know, one oh one cents on the dollar, if you will. And so in total, yesterday, we generated eight point eight three two million to the city. And then down below, under uses, that, that's how the eight point eight three is divided up. Probably the key figure for the city's purposes would be the project fund. Eight point six four one nine eight four would be the deposit to the project fund to be used for projects. That would be part of August twenty-ninth. And you may recall back when the notice was established back in June, we were conservatively estimating about nine, nine point one million. We're, we're trying to increase as much as possible, to the extent of interest rates came in lower, we can maximize. So our goal was to maximize the project dollars to the city, and so we were pleased to see that come in at eight point six million. That, that was quite a bit better than what we anticipated early on. And then we have the issuance cost, hundred and fifteen thousand, underwriter's discount, that went to the group that actually sold the certificates, fifty-three thousand, and then that insurance premium, like I mentioned, twenty-one thousand, and by purchasing that insurance, we're saving ninety-five thousand to the city in interest costs. And so all in about a hundred and ninety thousand in financing costs, and so those amounts we paid on the twenty-ninth, and then the remaining, that eight point six four one million will go to the project account. And then on the very bottom, the true interest cost, that's what we call, kind of like the effective rate, if you will. Almost it gets each, each year, it sells at a different interest rate, but overall, the average, three point nine three seven percent. Again, under four percent, we're very pleased with that. Page four is just a sample in the packet of the amortization. The payments are structured, the, the first payment will actually be due March of twenty twenty-four. So the city will need to include these payments in the budget, around six hundred and thirty-one thousand a year was the payments on the certificates, and that's a point year term on that. And you all will have the option to, if you choose to, to refinance or prepay early, starting in two thousand and thirty-three, that's pretty common. Typically, investors want to see ten years, and then after that tenth year, you know, the city can certainly refinance or pay off early if you choose to do so. Page six, it might be a little hard to read, but we always like to show this. Yesterday, like I said, the, the certificates were offered to investors, and on the bottom of page six, this shows the orders that were received. So you'll, you'll notice a black line in each year, that, that's the number of certificates that were available to purchase, making up that eight million or so. So anytime the, the green or blue line that exceeded the black line, that's good. That means you, we generated more investor demand than there are actually certificates, so that helps lower the interest rate. So overall, yesterday was a very good day. We saw a lot of demand, about nine point six million in actual orders to buy the city's certificates, and we had, you know, eight point six available, so good day in the market. I know if you're one to follow the markets, over the last year and a half, we've had a lot of interest rate increases, rates are have been going up, and we stabilized some for the last month or so, so I think it was a good time to lock this. And this is locked in, the interest rate, the interest rate does not change over time. Page seven, just a quick snapshot historically of what we've seen in the municipal bond market is what, you know, we classify this as. Historically speaking, you know, rates have gone up over the last year and a half. Historically, still low, if you look at the blue jagged line there, that, that's the historic, this is one of the indices we follow. So historically low in terms of that. Same information on page eight, it's in table form. And we've actually improved a little bit since the first of the year. We're not as low as we were two years ago, you know, two thousand and twenty-one, that was more or less all-time lows in terms of interest rates, but since that time, I'm from up. And then finally, the very last page, that rating report I mentioned, Standard and Coors. They're one of the three rating agencies that rate municipal bonds. And so you can read that report there at the end. That's that A rating that I mentioned earlier. And then the supplement I'll hand out, a lot of numbers here, but we thought we'd go through it. I know we provided this in the past, I know in the planning phase of this project. And as mentioned, I'll quickly walk from left to right. Column B, the certified values came in at the two hundred and eighty-three million this year. So it was a, a little uptick from last year. Last year, the city was at two hundred and fifty-five. This year, your property bet basically two hundred and eighty-three million, and so that was used to determine what payment amount could be afforded. The existing debt of the city is column D. Those are the existing payments on the city's existing debt. Column E, as you may recall, there's plans to pay off some of the existing debt early in this coming September, so we accounted for that. So column E are the actual payments that will go away after we retire some of that debt early, which is always good to see. Column F would be the payments after we pay off the debt early. That amount is going to be supported from utility funds, part of the plan is to support the existing debt from utility funds. And then that leads us to columns J, K, and L. J, K, and L are the payments on the certificates this evening. Column L, the six hundred and thirty-three thousand year debt service. And so kind of all in, all said, column M, the projected tax rate, that would be required around twenty-five cents or so to service the certificates here this evening. And that's right in line with last year's tax rate, so there's really no tax rate on the debt plan of this certificate. So all in, we were pleased with the results yesterday, and both with interest rates and the debt service, and then the amount the end deposit into the city's construction account was good to see. And then keeping the tax rate virtually unchanged was obviously a goal as well. Thoughts, questions, I'd be happy to answer those. I know there's probably a stack of legal documents. That will go down to the Attorney General upon approval, and then we'll get ready for the closing on the twenty-ninth.
And just as a reminder, well, we have general breakdown of how that money is gonna be allocated. But roughly, you know, it's the lion's shares for street. And then park improvements, and then public works facility improvements. So roughly six hundred thousand parks, five hundred thousand for public works facility, and then the balance would be for streets.
When would we start?
Well, if you remember, we had that whole draft, and I, you know, I've shown it so many times, I probably should have shown it again, but street improvements, so we had the near term, most of those near term were what Radon's gonna do this year. And we'll be able to do some next year with the COs. What is gonna the, the rub, if you will, is we've got the Texas Water Development Board projects that are ongoing. And so part of those projects are replacement of water lines and sewer lines. So we know where the sewer lines are going, so we've identified, you know, streets where the sewer lines have already been replaced that are candidates for street improvements. We, on the wastewater side, we did the I I study, and so we, they're determining, the engineers are determining what collection lines then will be replaced, and so some of that will be dependent upon that. But we have a general idea, and that's that table that I've given you of the one to two, the two to five years, and then, you know, the longer term. So for the next three years, I mean, at least you're gonna be seeing a lot of street improvements. And we do have to spend this, these monies by a certain date, and we're not gonna have a problem doing that. Probably the first projects out of the gate will be public works and parks, and then the paving that will happen from this, these monies will happen next year.
What is the timeline on how to spend the money?
It is, I can't remember that date.
The general rule is you want to be able to spend eighty-five percent within three years. And it's actually good right now, because, you know, this is at a three point nine four percent. You're probably gonna be able to earn a little more than that, invest in that money right now, so you're able to keep those interest earnings.
Can you explain this, this column N number, again, that, that quarter of a percent, I guess? That's based on the, the column B taxable valuation?
Yes, sir.
And our debt service?
That's right.
Okay, yeah. So previous years, we were around that, that quarter percent as well for the debt service payment?
Historically, they've been at that twenty-five, yeah, mark, and then now that can change each year, you know, every July, city will give a new column B.
Yeah, hopefully B goes up, and will decrease essentially.
And that's a good point. This assumes no growth, so to the extent that column B does go up, then, you know, each year, the commission has the ability to maybe go over to column M if you choose to. Try to be conservative in that sense.
Yeah, no, that's good.
Well, you three keep up with all this, so when it comes down in about twenty years, I won't be here.
Elder, yeah. The elder years?
The what name?
How old are you?
Oh. Well, let's put it this way, in twenty years, that'd put me close to a hundred.
I think that's, I think I'll be erased at the end of this chart.
Older than anybody in here. And I won't be around that long.
Are there any more questions for Eric, Mr. Mahal?
You had to bring us a check tonight so we can get it deposited?
I can't wait that much, that quickly, sir. Takes a little time, but we'll get you on the, there you go.
There, there you go. Y'all good? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
These are ours to keep?
Yes, sir.
Do the questions. Thank you. Now, where, where are you at? Where do you live?
We're in Dallas.
Now, oh, you got a long trip back.
We're always, I'm always on the road.
I understand.
He's coming from Emerald? Thank you for that.
Thank you very much.
I move to approve ordinance twenty twenty-three that well authorizing the hit sale of City of Breckridge Terry nomination tax and revenues certificate obligation. Series twenty twenty-three, levying an annual ad valorem tax and providing for the security for a payment of said certificate's obligation, providing effective date and enacting other provisions relating to the subject.
Second. Motion and second, all in favor? Aye, none opposed. Alright, thank you, guys. Item seven, discussion and necessary action regarding final chapter order number four to the AMI meter replacement project acceptance of project and purchase of stock meters. Turn it back to our city manager.
Okay, this has been a long time coming, but we did get it over the goal line, so this is the last change order. Really, it's a final reconciled change order. It is a, a negative amount, meaning, you know, positive to us. And it was just reconciling. I think the biggest challenge that we had with this project is, and you all well know, just really not knowing where everything is. And that, that has been a challenge, but the project, the original contract price was, you know, these are ARBA dollars. And it was one point two roughly million dollars. We had change orders, and you can see them there in the background information for a net overage of sixty-four, four two four. And we did increase the days of, of the contract, and we can see where that is. There is a, a letter from the engineer, you know, he was project manager, E H T was project manager, so looked approving the, all of the closing documents, and you'll see the closing documents in your background information. The other thing that we did, the prices have increased substantially for these meters, unfortunately. So what we want to do is, you know, we're constantly having people, you know, come on and off, and maybe they're going to a house where we didn't identify a meter and where it was. So this will give us a small stock of meters to have on hand. And you see that invoice back there, it's around sixty-five hundred dollars. So we're just looking for that acceptance of the project, the closing documents, and purchase of those documents at the contract prices instead of the interest prices.
Will these, will these be well-secured somewhere? I mean, somebody decide they want a meter, and I'm sure they'd take one and sell it somewhere.
Yeah, I mean, it is, you know, yes. I mean, our, our top and bottom shop are behind lock gate.
Yeah.
I mean, we have had some issues, but, you know, one of the projects, I mean, we do have a storage facility, and that's where they're kept, and it's locked as well, of course. But, I mean, one of the projects is not only that lean, I don't like to call lean too, but an equipment court that we're moving from the bottom shop up to the top shop. We've already built the concrete slab, so it's a metal building to update our storage. And so that will probably be a little to update our storage. And so that will probably be a little bit more secure than what we have. But yes, they are.
Good. Okay. Are you motioning, anybody?
I move to approve final change order number four to the AMI meter replacement project acceptance of project and purchase of stock meters.
Motion in second. All in favor? None opposed? All right. Item eight, discussion and any necessary action regarding approval of ordinance twenty twenty-three dash eleven, updating schedule fees. And this will be a first reading.
So this update of the schedule fee ordinances includes three changes that will take place in October. So it'll be the first reading. The water wastewater rate increase is included on this and in the actual order. All of these changes are in red. The solid waste contract that we have with Republic Service includes an increase for the C P I. And so you can see we listed what the current rate would be. And then also language provide, we already had a contract with B B for plan review inspections, things like that. We haven't really had to use them very often because we have, we've had a plumbing inspector here, but they recently resigned. That's Calvin Chaney. And so we're going to need to use B B for that. And of course, any plan reviews. But what we didn't have in the schedule of ordinances, language that just passes all along that third-party cost. So there's no markup to it. Just whatever they charge, this is what we'll charge the builder for that or the inspection.
I move to approve the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-three dash eleven, updating the schedule fees.
So motion in second. All in favor? None opposed? Thank you. Item nine, discussion and any necessary action regarding approval of resolution twenty twenty-three dash eighteen, accepted the two thousand twenty-three certified appraisal role.
So this is just pretty routine. We got, we got those in and of course, last Tuesday. And we had to kind of go back and massage the budget a little bit because it was obviously based on preliminary values. The preliminary values, if you remember, were about two hundred and eighty-six. So the certified came in a little bit less at two eighty-three. But of course, it was more than last year, which was two fifty-seven. But this is just accepting a resolution, accepting the twenty twenty-three certified appraisal role. And you got the background information there, but basically that's that two hundred and eighty-three.
Motion, anybody?
I move to approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash eighteen, accepted the twenty twenty-three certified appraisal role.
Motion second. All in favor? All right. Item ten, discussion and any necessary action scheduled August twenty ninth for public hearing on the proposed tax rate, discuss tax rate N N R and voter approval rate, the minus rate, and take a record vote.
So this, we had our budget workshop last week. And so what we're doing now with Senate Bill two is notifying of a tax increase and then calling for that public hearing on August twenty ninth. That's what this action will do. And then you're also on another agenda. I am going to be calling for the public hearing on the budget. And that will be September fifth. So just as a review, the no new revenue rate is point nine one seven five zero. The voter approval M and O is point eight four five nine nine. The debt rate, which he discussed, is that I N S rate is point two five five one zero. The voter approval rate adjusted for sales tax, which again, remember that is including that quarter cent of the sales tax that goes to help reduce the property tax. And that point nine seven eight one eight. And the de minimis rate is one point one six two two four. So using the de minimis rate rules, proposed tax rate is one point zero five four seven one.
I move to approve the proposed tax rate and schedule public hearing on proposed tax rate for August twenty ninth, two thousand twenty-three.
Motion second.
Second.
All in favor? None opposed? Thank you. Item eleven, discussion and any necessary action regarding setting a public hearing to consider fiscal year two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four proposed budget on September fifth, two thousand twenty-three.
So again, this is calling the public hearing on the proposed budget, and that will be on September fifth.
Okay.
I move to approve scheduling the public hearing to consider F Y twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four proposed budget on September fifth, twenty twenty-three.
Next second. Thank you. All in favor? None opposed? Thank you. All right. Any requests of the city manager, about anything you need to be on the next agenda? Any items or concerns? Nothing? We're through. Six oh five, I guess. Is that pretty close? Want to go on by that? Thank you, gentlemen.